... America, and to the Republic of Georgia's friends, one nation under God, in the middle of the world, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis. Ms. Grantopoulos. Ms. Gravas-Cowell. Here. Mr. Grillup. Here. Ms. Donovan. Here. Ms. Keating.
Keating.
Ms. Alcari.
President.
Mr. Ronoff.
Here.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the following means. Annual notice was sent to the Herald and News for record for South Bergenite, the Observer, Passion, Parker, Bosman, and Lobby of the Town Hall and Board Office, setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meeting of four. Laura, do you have some presentations? Come on up.
I'd like to invite two students, Izzy Cassinetti and Adam Fruffey. We have two students who have been commended for their placement on the PSATs. So what I want to do is read the letter from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation first, and then I want to tell you a little bit about each of these students. The letter commendation signifies your designation as a commended student to the National Merit Scholarship Program. Your high selection index will replace you among the top 50,000 of over 1.6 million students who entered the 2019 National Merit Program by taking the 2017 preliminary SAT, which is the PSAT's National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. All of us associated with the program join officials of your high school in congratulating you for your excellent performance on the PSAT. You are among about 34,000 commended students nationwide who have shown exceptional academic promise, yet only the top 16,000 screen scores participate as a semifinalist. However, your performance on the qualifying test was outstanding, and recognition as a commended student is accredited to you, your parents, and your high school. The degree of success you achieve in the future depends on you, your use of the abilities, and your perseverance toward the goals you set for yourself. We offer you our best wishes with the hope that being named a commended student in the National Merit Program will broaden your horizons and encourage you to develop your potential to the fullest. National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Congratulations. While they're both here, I would like to embarrass them just a little bit more in front of this big audience and some of their teachers. When you hear people talk about bettering the high school and improving the schools, well, these two are the epitome of everything that we want our students to be. They are both two of Lynn Hurst's finest and deserve this recognition and congratulations for their hard work, effort, time, and overall contributions and dedication to the school in sports, music, and the classroom. So first, I want to tell you a little bit about Izzy. I'm sending you to embarrass her. Okay, so not only is Izzy a academic achiever, she's also on the sports field of the norm. She was named first team all-star for soccer, second team all-star for track. She participated in the poetry slam. She received the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Award in 2016. Top 10% of the class all three years so far. Inducted into the National Honor Society, the World Language Honor Society, participated in mock trial, vice president of FBLA, recording secretary of FBLA. She's also the captain of the soccer team. Earned a gold award on the national Spanish exam in 2016 and a silver in 2017. She achieved a score of a five on the AP Push, which is Social Studies AP test, and AP Language and Composition tests. So those are just some of her achievements here at the high school. So when we talk about Lynn Hurst's finest, Izzy's certainly one of them. And a little bit about Adam. He began building computers before his freshman year. He has earned a five, which is of course the highest you can get, on the AP Language and Composition exam, a five on the AP Computer Science Principles exam, a three on the AP Physics exam. Also, he is helping out on his free block during the senior privilege in one of our chemistry classrooms, so he gives up his free time to help other students in class. Received the AP Scholar Award, and most impressively, on your SATs, a perfect score, if you know, is 1,600, and Adam got a 1,560, which... Which I'm sure you all know the SATs, that is an unbelievable accomplishment. So although these two did come up for their merit scholarship commendation, I couldn't let them leave without mentioning all of their accolades that they have achieved throughout high school, and we're hoping to see what they've got. They've got one more year left of seniors, and I have to tell you, neither of them have taken it easy this senior year. They're chock full of AP classes, honors passes, and they're certainly two of Lynn Hurst's finest. Congratulations.
I think at this time, what we'll do is we'll have the scout presentation, the Eagle Scout presentation. Come on up. The stage is yours.
My name's Josh Maycar from 286 in Lynn Hurst. I go to Lynn Hurst High School, and I'm a part of the band, too. My project is to rebuild the shelving of the band room. And what we're basically coming to do is rebuild the shelving that includes all the instruments in the main section. We're also going to be refurbishing the shelving in the storage room and rebuilding all the shelving because of music and footboulders and everything. This is going to be funded through me, through the scouts, so this won't cost anything through you guys. All donations from things that I'm doing. It'll be staff, our fellow scouts, and band members. Once the project starts, all the furniture is going to be built offsite, and should take about one week to construct the band room.
Why don't you hold it up, show the audience?
A picture that you guys have. This is what the band room shelving looks like now. And this is what we would like it to look like.
If you put your microphone on, people can hear you. I don't know if it's protocol, but I think a motion to approve his plan tonight to get this closet going. Absolutely, Mr. Grillup, a second motion right now. All in favor? Approved. You need a signature from the president. I'm sure everyone knows what an honor it is to be an Eagle Scout. That is the, I mean, that is the epitome of scouting. That's the highest you could go. It's an honor that not very many, not very many people ever achieve in all the years of scouting, and it's unbelievable that we have this young man, and he's doing something not only achieving, becoming an Eagle Scout, but helping the school and helping the band to boot. So another round of applause. All right, we have one more presentation we're going to do. It was supposed to be later on, but maybe we can get it taken care of. The Unified Club. Come on up.
Hi. Felicia, I'm a teacher at Roseville School. I teach Special Olympics, and I am on this Club of Unified Club that is through Special Olympics. I gave you guys all a little packet, just kind of introducing what the Unified Club is. I know some of you already know about it, but I just wanted to inform you guys of the greater depth of what we do. The Play Unified Club gives young people the tools, platform, and empowerment they can change makers in helping us reach the vision. In this program, students have the opportunity to interact with sports, competition, social, academic, and recreational activities. The Play Unified Club will build character, increase acceptance of others, develop leadership skills, and enhance the school community. It is a program that teaches beyond classroom and expands a student's social horizon. Now, we have this currently at Lincoln School, Jefferson, Roseville, and Memorial School every twice a month. We're about to start in November. I attached all the dates, and in fact, we hope to have tournaments within our district, and we can get other districts involved as well. And that's just the plans for this year, and we've been doing this for the past two years, and we've been fortunate to even receive $7,500 from Special Olympics. And they're willing to even give us as much money as we need, as much support to enhance this club, to improve it, to make it be better, to expand it to all the streets in our district. However, to make that possible, I really need your support, and administrative support, and especially you guys. So please come by this year, check it out. I'll be back, guys, and keep informing you, updating you on everything, but there are so many more opportunities that we can do to make this even bigger, even better for our whole district. It won't even cost you a thing. All I just need is your support and to show Special Olympics that I have your support, that we can expand this to something even bigger and greater. Right now, you just have the Unified Club. We can even expand to other sports, go to competitions for cool skating, and on this little packet you'll see, we're already recognized as a pretty large district within the state. And every month, we actually get huge shout-outs to Special Olympics and things that our district's doing, and this has been going on from last year. So every month, we have almost a page in the Special Olympics newsletter that has shout-outs to our district for all the great things that our district has done, and shown and improved, and really support the whole vision of inclusion throughout the entire district. So really, I just would love to have your support and be happy to talk about other opportunities even at another time and how to expand this. But really, I just want to give you guys the information to inform you of what's going on in these four schools, and also just have your support to come out and check out some of the events with me, competitions. I listed the three days, so those three days are set in stone, they're going to be huge, so I really hope that you guys can come out, visit on a Tuesday at any of the four schools. If you come outside and it's nice out, you'll see large groups of people. At Roseville School alone, we have a third of the school involved, that's about 100 kids. So we don't have the issue of getting the kids involved, they only want to be involved, because at Roseville, for example, there's not that many after-school clubs. They want to do things, they're looking for things to do, so we only have such a huge population of students who are already interested. So yeah, we can expand it and make it even bigger and better. So thank you for your time, thank you for listening to this, and I hope you take a look at this. My name's Felicia Watt, I'm based out of Roseville. Check it out, visit me, email me, I'm happy to talk about it anytime you feel. So thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and I'm sure I could speak to the board when I say that you'll have our full support for something like this, so whatever you need, anything, we can do, just let us know. We're quite all. I need a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Second.
Second. Rogue vote. Ms. Malick.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Grantopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Gravas-Cowell.
Four.
Mr. Grillup.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keating.
Four.
Ms. Alcari.
Four.
Mr. Ronoff. Next, we have our superintendent's report. Mr. Greco.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to point out, just want to point out something that's on the agenda. We have district goals on the agenda. There are two very general goals, there are two-year goals for a district, and the first one is to improve student achievement on a par, SAT, ACT, and selected proprietary assessments. And just to quickly mention some of the major activities within that goal, which aren't listed on the agenda, but they're only on the website under District Information, the two is the actual action plan for each goal. So under the improved student achievement is continuing revisions and updates of the curriculum, which our staff is working very hard at, and very often. Professional development and increasing common planning time for teachers, both vertical and horizontal, it's something we're obviously not where we want to be, but we're getting there and trying to get to a point where our teachers do feel comfortable and do have that time to meet with their colleagues. And then observations of futures in the classroom, which obviously we have to do, and relative feedback, obviously, that we want to just continue to help them be successful. We want to continue to analyze our test data, which we've already done a few times this year to address individual student needs, as well as the needs of all students. And basically, going back to the original goal, is to just increase standardized test scores from last year to the next and continue in that direction. We did a great job, if you were at our last meeting. The second goal is a goal that is, I think, a very common theme across definitely in Jersey, probably the United States, is basically to improve parent communication and involvement through district outreach efforts. So, you know, again, I think everybody in all different types of districts throughout, let's just say, North Jersey, have difficulty getting parent and community involvement, and I think it's an obvious reason. I think people are busy, you know, taking kids to different things and doing a lot of different things, but we want to get parents informed and out as much as possible. So we are going to try, some of the things that we're going to try to do is improve our website and our social media outlets that we use, create parent surveys as often as possible to gather feedback about things such as school operations and topics of interest. We're like, we're going to try to call it Parent Academy, where we offer different topics. I know Lynn Hurst has done a great job of doing that. The high school, our elementary schools, upper and lower, our PTAs, our different associations do a great job of doing that. I think just maybe getting the word out even more, maybe trying different methods of getting the word out, and we're just going to continue in that area, working with the town as often as possible, whether it be our municipal alliance, the police, different entities like that. And one of the things I will do soon is coming up, I think starting in November, I'll be visiting a lot of PTE meetings. PTE, going through their regular agenda, and I'll kind of just be there to answer anything. I probably won't have every answer that night, but I'll be back to you if I know. And really kind of an open forum, just kind of a coffee kind of thing, and just kind of sit down and get to know what the concerns are, because obviously, every building, every parent has different concerns. So just wanted to kind of give a little bit more detail of what's on the agenda. And again, those action plans will be on the website, they're user-friendly to read. There's nothing for our staff, it's nothing that you're not already doing, it's just us really keeping an eye on what you're doing, trying to organize it a little better from the administrative end, so just wanted to put that out. The other thing I just wanted to mention is a lot of our, obviously, picture going well academically, but a lot of our athletic teams in the high school have made the postseason. I think every fall team has made the postseason today. Our boys soccer team played, and they lost actually to Caldwell here at home, but they had a great season. Our girls violin team didn't win, they played at Caldwell High School, I believe it was West Caldwell Tech, and they won. I don't know what the score was, but they won. Tomorrow, girls soccer team will be home, and hopefully, they'll continue to have another home game later this weekend, Friday, but one game at a time, obviously. Our football team has a game this Friday against Hanover Park, state playoffs. Obviously, that's another opportunity for our band and the cheerleaders to perform, which is great, so it's an exciting time. Our cross-country has a meet in, I don't know exactly where, it's on my Twitter, but it's Saturday, and it's the sectionals, it's the team's sectionals for the cheer team. I just had it closed, and I think I addressed every sport, but we're very proud of them. As you can see, a lot of our students that are involved in athletics, in cheerleading clubs, they do things, they get merit scholarship awards. We have an Eagle Scout, and as Mr. Ronoff said, being an Eagle Scout is very hard. I would compare it probably to getting like a doctorate or something like that, and probably a little bit harder. And as you can see, he's not only giving back to the community, he's giving directly back to the school, so I really commend him. And to hear some of the things that Adam and Izzy were doing is so impressive, you know, I mean, they mentioned so many things, I don't know how to find the time. And Felicia, thank you, Felicia, for your presentation. We did mention it in our curriculum meeting, and I'm actually, and I know the board members are actually really excited to see, you know, up close and personal what's going on there, so I hear great things about it, and we're very proud of you for doing that. And again, it's just one of the many things our staff members do, a lot of them don't share every little thing, a lot goes unnoticed, so I would like to thank Felicia as well as the rest of our staff for really going above and beyond. So thank you. Thanks.
We have a report from our state monitor, Mr. Tom Egan, on our state affairs.
Thank you, Ms. Perri. Good evening, all. Just a heads up with the audit for the 2018 year is just about finished. The report will be, is being prepared and will be presented at the November meeting. The importance of this event is that the independent auditors will certify as the exact extent of the deficit that the school district presented. With that certification from the auditors, the state then will be requested, and I believe strongly that they will prove it, to fund and advance the funds to eliminate the deficit so we can move forward. It's an important step and will help Lynn Hurst to get back on the straight now. We still have work to do, but at least we'll be at this milestone. At that time, also, we should have, I should be able to present a financial report relating to the referendum that is not yet completed because of bidding that came in and that were over budget, so we have to address the, some of the elements left in the referendum. Once again, that will be addressed shortly also. Then last but not least, imagine what everybody's mainly here for, was the item on the agenda relating to the transfer or conversion from one healthcare company to Etna. I want to apologize upfront that there'd be some delay in getting the information out to you, but you should know that we, the district hired a new insurance broker, IMAC. Joe Marillo was the CEO. He's very good. He was hired in July, under the, my understanding, which I only learned recently, that the employees of the district had troubles with prescription drugs. The, some of the issues were from the old company to the new one, Medicor. I've heard back from numerous representatives that it was at hand. I contacted Joe Marillo from IMAC, and he had less than six complaints or problems presented to him, which he resolved. My understanding, he solved a very efficient matter to alleviate the problems that the employees were handling. There were other issues with the prescription drug program. One was a lack of confidence as to what the exact finances were with it. As a result of the best concern, the superintendent and I met with two principals like the second week in October to go over the concerns. They were all presented to me, some of which I couldn't follow, some of which the information was coming from a previous broker and a previous insurance company. I made a pledge at that point, I will find out all the answers and present everything in detail, not only to those two principals, but I suggested, why don't we open it up to get the LEA involved and any other interesting people that wanted to be at the meeting, specifically in addition to the two principals, but also the supervisors. And the meeting was scheduled for October 15th, the Monday morning. Previous, it's something to note, previous to that, the superintendent... Previous, it's something to note, previous to that, the superintendent in consulting with me notified the head of the LEA, of the president and vice president, that one of the things we're going to do is put everything on track and follow procedure with everything that is done in Lynn Hurst. Before it was assigned to the district, there were many things done that would not really reduce the riding, that would have done handshakes, and I believe that that led to some of the problems that the district is experiencing. So one of the things was putting everything right. And myself and the superintendent even talked about, the superintendent having weekly or monthly meetings with the executive board of the LEA. But for that to happen, to discuss many things, finances, employee complaints, curriculum, student discipline, things that would make the district run smoothly. One of the conditions or one of the ground rules was that if representative from the NJEA came to work with them, which if you knew one of it, that's fine, but then we have to have notice of it so that we can have our board adjourned. Present. What happened at the meeting on the 15th, which we would have explained all the situations involving the prescription drug problems, but also to inform the leadership of everything that we have on EDNA, to provide them the information so they're taking some decision from the membership and identify some of their concerns. Over the weekend, well, last minute, they notified the superintendent that NJEA is going to attend the meeting. We informed them, superintendent, I attended, we discussed it, we informed the LEA that we're not going to have that meeting on the 15th, we're postponing, so we can make sure that our attorney can always be present. It never happened. What was disappointing to me was a personal element, because I totally understand the LEA wants to have representatives from the NJEA. Absolutely, I have no problem with that, but we should just have an equal opportunity. But the two principals and the supervisors, they said that they wouldn't come either, and I don't understand that. To this day, I still don't understand it. The bottom line is at that meeting, the Joe Morillo from IMAC was going to explain everything. He had the documents. He was going to be, he made himself totally available for questions about how moving to EDNA would impact the employees. Unfortunately, that really didn't happen. Just going forward on it, the motion, yes, is that I-